Are we on?
We're ready.
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of August 15, 2018. On the agenda tonight at 6:30 PM, we have a review and approval of the minutes of March 26, 2018. At 6:35, we have a determination for 21 Long Avenue. Stanley and Catherine Iwanicki, hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. And applicant is requesting to install an eight-foot by eight-foot deck onto a single-family home. At 6:50 PM, we have a determination, 6 Cormac Road, Betty Ray Popo. Applicant is requesting a determination after the fact in regard to a change in a roof line from a flat to a pitched roof during a recent renovation. 7 PM, a determination for 128 Lane 10, Daniel Z. Peliziri. Applicant has submitted a request for determination for new construction of a 30-foot by 35-foot detached garage or budding an existing driveway. And the 7:15 item, the endorsement of Five Leaves project agreement, we haven't got that material back. Old business, new business, and adjournment. As far as the meeting minutes of the 26th of March, 2018, there again, since we don't have a quorum of the people that were present at that meeting, we will have to defer approval of the draft minutes until the next meeting. And then we will also do the minutes of the July 18 meeting. All right. Now, would the board please introduce themselves?
Tom Burles.
Bill Zelenek.
Marge Cooney.
Mike Young.
Fidelis Ombreike.
Thank you. All right. Since this is, there's nothing else that we have to do and there's no approval of minutes, and since we have a determination, we can go ahead with the determination. So whoever is presenting for the Iwanickis, please sit there and use the mic and introduce yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Stanley Iwanicki.
Oh, I wasn't too far off.
Nope.
Would you like to discuss what you propose to do?
Well, what I'd like to do is I'd like to build an eight-by-eight deck on the back of a single-family home at 21 Long Avenue. Basically, what it's going to do is just square off the back of the building. There is, right there, there is now platforms, I guess you would say, that there was an existing deck there at one time. So I just want to basically just put back what was there, not extending it or anything else, just squaring off the back of the house. As you can see, there's a, on the back, that portion, that, I guess, portion is where the deck is going to be.
And so the total deck is just going to be the eight-foot by eight-foot?
Eight-by-eight. It's just going to square off the back, yeah.
Okay. Anything else that we can, anything else you'd like to discuss on it?
Well, I had approval from the, I went to the conservation commission and they-
You did get approval?
Yes, I did get approval. I have to put out the DEP number in front before I start the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I was just going to suggest that.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have received all of the other memos that we have.
From the fire department and-
Yeah, we have one from our town planner.
Mm-hmm.
And that one, basically, she doesn't seem to have any problem with it. The proposal by the applicant will modify the footprint of the structure by adding the deck. However, there was a deck in the location previously.
Mm-hmm.
And sits in line with the existing structure. No additional nonconformities with regard to setback or lack coverage. So we, you have that. And let's see what else we have. Just want to verify you have everything. From our building commissioner, memo dated the 29th of July, he basically has no objections to the project. Disturbage Fire Department has no major concerns. However, they mention general bylaw section 7.70, the building numbering.
Mm-hmm.
So what they want you to do is on the street side, the address side of the street, to put a number that's visible.
Yeah, well, I'll ask somewhere, because there is one on the building itself.
Okay.
On the home itself, 21 Long Avenue is right on the building, and it's about six inches, the lettering.
Oh, that, that's-
I don't know exactly.
Yeah, no, that's fine. All they require is about two and a half by three inches, something approximately like that.
Yeah.
But they want it to be, usually they prefer if it's contrasting in color so that you can see it visibly.
Okay.
In case any accident or anything.
Sure.
Then we also have a memo from Brianna Eichstadt, who was our, who is presently our health agent, and she has no issues because it's both on town sewer and you have a well on the opposite side of the home. So everything else is there. Now, we opened it up. No questions? Anybody on the board have questions? Look it over?
Yeah, just a comment. I appreciate that we have this type of neighborhood in Sturbridge.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're hard to find now, because everyone needs a one-acre lot and so forth.
Right, right.
This is a nice place to live. We've been down there three or four, five times in the past six months to look at different projects, but, and it continues to be nice. Your neighbors are right there.
It's, yeah, I mean, there are two neighbors I need to, matter of fact, when we moved in, the neighbor to the right of us sold, and the neighbor out front, because we lived in a cove, sold. I thought maybe we just, you know, there goes the neighborhood. When we moved in, everybody was selling, but I guess it was time for them because, you know, everybody, the family moved on, nobody wanted it. So, but yeah, it is, it is quiet, it's beautiful. I mean, everybody gets along pretty well in there, yeah.
I have no problems with that project.
Okay. Would anybody else like to discuss anything?
I have no questions, Marge.
No questions? No questions.
No questions. Well, this seems to be a pretty easy one, huh? And you're going to put it on the pier with, in a pad?
I'm sorry?
You're putting it on a pier?
Yes, yeah.
And a pad, okay. And let's see what else. We got all the documentation, what claim D. You really provided us with a lot. Thank you.
Wanted to do it right.
Very good. All right. Since this is not a public hearing and we have anything else, would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion, Marge.
All right. You're going to cite the motion?
Regarding the addition of a deck at the address of 21 Long Avenue owned by Stanley and Catherine Iwanicki, the application is requesting to install an eight-by-eight deck onto a single-family home. There appears to be no increase in nonconformities to the building or in the neighborhood that would detract from the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. It is an ordinary project with nothing of concern that I can see. So I would make a motion that we grant the determination to Stanley and Catherine, Catherine Iwanicki.
I want to refer to?
Oh, okay. I will just add the plan notes, based on a plan, let me see, an inspection plot plan, job number 16243 by Jalbert Engineering, and it's dated, well, the original plot plan is dated 2011, but, and then we have an inspection date of 11/15/16.
Right.
Okay, so those are the numbers on the project.
All right. May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a vote? All in favor? 3-5-0. Lots of luck.
Thank you very much for your help.
That went through fast.
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome.
Marge, do you want to sign this now?
Sure, we have time, so I might as well.
Stanley, if you'll make a second, I can give you this and then do the other stuff.
Want me to put acting chairman?
Yes, that'd be great. Just a copy for our record. We'll get yours now.
And I just want to say that I had excellent help from the planning board and conservation commission when I came in that had no idea what I needed to do. I mean, they walked me through it, helped me very much.
We try. I think we do. I'm very happy that, to hear that, you know? We get the bricks a lot of times, but we need the boughs still.
You bet.
Thank you. Check the box, yeah. It's not, yeah, I know. All right. Okay, is it? Enjoy your place.
Thank you, we will, we are.
Very good. Are you here for the next one? Yeah, just wait until we announce it. No, you're, you're okay, I'm talking about the- Good evening. All right, the next one we have is, all right, we have Ms. Betty Ray Popo from 6 Cormac Road. The applicant is requesting to change in roof line from a flat to a pitched roof, and this is after the fact, as we said. Would you please identify yourself and, yeah, speak into the mic.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Betty Ray Popo. I've been on Leadmine Lake since 1968. It, I, it basically is our family home, and we rented there first and then we bought. And I was reading all of this. I swim all the time. I think I spend more time in the water than anyone else, and it's important to me that it be kept clean and wonderful and lovely, okay? It's a very special place. My neighbor across the lake that I used to swim over every morning, we sort of feel it's our little bit of heaven on earth. It is that, we don't want people around there, okay? So I shouldn't be telling you this, but it's clean, it's spring-fed, it's beautiful. We had, I'm as old as the cottage, which was built in 1935, and we had a lot of leaking. So we had a new roof put on it, and when they did, they changed the pitch so that we wouldn't have the leaking coming in. And we also did some other repairs, because when something is as old as a cottage and I am, it's not a simple thing to repair. You run into one thing and another thing, but we did nothing to change the footprint. And I was not aware that it's called an envelope.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so I knew we weren't changing anything-
Thing on the footprint.
-as far as the footprint went. And I didn't realize that when we raised the roof, we were changing the envelope, and I apologize for that. I had no idea.
Well, I'm just, while you mention the envelope, I'm just, for any members of the board, new members that we have, what we talk about within an envelope, and I think the easiest way to describe it is think of a box, okay? Think of it as the way, whatever its shape is that originally was. And then if you were to open the sides and change, that, that would be the envelope. If you change the exterior walls and that, that would be changing the envelope, all right?
Yeah.
I think that's an easiest way to describe it.
Yeah, and we did because of the leaking.
Right. All right. I will just mention that we have the different memos, and there is a memo, I see before I forget, that you have to go and consult with Conservation Commission.
Yes.
And there's a memo from Conservation Agent dated August 8th we have, so hopefully you received it.
No, I didn't.
All right, we'll see that you get a-
Okay.
It's on a double sheet. Yeah, it's on a double sheet. All right, let me get that out.
No, I-
I did give her a copy of that. I believe it was, wasn't that, that you need to go before a conservation for this project?
Yes, it says here, the site is within a jurisdictional buffer zone to a resource area protected pursuant to the Wetland Protection Act, WPA, and the Sturbridge Wetland Bylaw. The site is also within a mapped priority habitat by the Mass. Department of Fish and Wildlife Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. It's unclear to the extent the project completed, which may require review. If only a small portion of the roof line was modified, it does not appear that a Sturbridge Conservation Commission review may have been required nor a review with the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. The commission recommends the downspouts are directed to either infiltration pits or areas of crushed stone to allow for infiltration so it doesn't run off into it. Dripsticks should be added under the roof line without gutters for capturing an infiltration runoff. Prior to the initiation of work, the property owner should consult with the Conservation Department on any future projects for filing requirements as the site is within the jurisdictional buffer zone of the WPA and the SWB, which is acronyms for what we read.
Was that sent to Lowell Meadow, my home?
No, it's, you want a copy?
That was the, it was in the paperwork that I printed off for you.
Okay, that, okay.
Did you?
And after speaking with the Conservation Agent, she was, she's not concerned about needing the project to go before the Conservation Commission.
Do we have a memo from her? I'd like-
We have the email.
I'd like a copy of that for the file, please, for us.
In addition to this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
A copy of the email.
I know the fire department, we have to, which we are doing, is put in a smoke detector and a carbon monoxide.
Yeah, we'll go through to make sure that you got everything. And we, did you get a copy of our letter from our town, from our planning directive?
Yeah, I said it.
Okay. And let's see what else we have. I think that was about it. Oh, fire department, no problem with it. And our police department have no concerns about it, and that's about all that we received. All right. Any questions from the board? Just don't move back, no?
I have no questions.
I tried to stop by today, and I got to visit Christine next door.
Yes.
She brought me a soda while I was standing in the next to my truck, which wouldn't go back up the hill.
[laughing]
Because the transmission to fail, because I had just come out of his road-
Yeah.
-with my old truck.
Yeah.
You're blaming me?
No one else here.
Yeah, Cormac Road is, actually, if I go down there in the wintertime, I park it on Leadmine and walk in. I mean, it's, yeah, yeah.
It's a nice location. It's-
It's, it's wonderful.
I don't understand that swimming business, but-
Oh, yeah. Well, some people fish, but I swim.
Just the previous applicant said that he was informed of everything when he applied for this. How come she wasn't informed?
They didn't, they didn't realize that this project changed the envelope. They knew that they weren't changing the footprint, and under our bylaws, if it changes any of the envelope at all, they're supposed to go through the permitting review process. And honestly, typically, the contractor knows this and will go forward with it, but there's, just seems to be a miscommunication, and it sounds like the house is tucked away, so it wasn't something that was glaringly obvious to the building inspectors that was moving forward. So that's why we're here today.
So there was never any additional surveys done or anything ever since the one in 1972? There was never any other survey done on this? From what I can see?
Probably not.
I don't know this thing. I don't see anything here. Mr. Young, do you have any questions?
No questions, Marge.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll do it. So it's a motion to find that the proposal by Betty Ray Popo for property located at 6 Cormac Road to allow a change in roof line on the exist, on the existing home will not be substantially more detrimental to the existing in accordance with section 24 dot 09A through E and section 20 dot 05 of the Sturbridge zoning bylaws. So this is a motion-
Very good.
...to grant the special permit requested as outlined in-
No, that, it's a request for determination. All right. Do you have to refer to the plan?
So the plan prepared, I don't see any plan, just the registry was this.
Yeah, this is-
Just, just these two things here.
Yeah, the plan of land in Sturbridge Mass. surveyed for Stanley J. Chiselski.
So plan of land in Sturbridge Mass. surveyed by Stanley-
Four.
Four, surveyed for Stanley J.
Chiselski.
The, the plan number is-
I don't believe there is one.
There's a, a date.
Yeah, there's a date, April 18, 1972. And the land survey with Robert F. Power.
Okay, so dated April 18, 1972. But no revisions.
All right. May I have a second?
A second, yes.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor for granting determination? And just as an addition, all, this is all concerns of any department or agencies or anything must be addressed and all permits must be pulled prior to construction, but this is after the fact, so, thank you.
I could say as an aside that my daughter came up with someone, looked at it, decided to make the changes, and I didn't find out about it until I started getting the bills. That is the truth.
But you had a good discussion about that.
Well, her point was that while I was alive, I would pay for it. If I died, she'd have to, there are three girls that will inherit it, and she'd have to battle it out with them. So that was her strategy.
Oh, well.
I should have had her here with me tonight, yeah.
That's all right. Yeah, these children will get you in trouble all the time.
That's my stuff.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Lots of luck.
And we will work very hard at keeping that lake clean.
Good.
That is, it really is a special place. Have you ever been out to swim in there?
Yeah, but there's not much public access.
I've been familiar with it though quite a while.
Yeah, public access through the woods.
Yeah. You make it hard.
I have a pocketbook somewhere. Oh, there it is. Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hi.
All right, gosh, moving along.
Yeah.
Are you Mr. Pelis, Pelisia?
Mm-hmm.
We can take you ahead of time since it's not a public hearing.
Home for supper a little earlier.
Good. All right, please identify yourself and speak into the mic and tell us what you're going to do.
Daniel Pelisir, 128 Lane 10. Looking to build a detached garage.
It's a steel garage, from what I see, with two bays?
That is so far the preference based on cost and ruggedness because it is tucked into the woods and branches can fall.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I saw the purchase order in that, tempted purchase order and everything. I mean, you haven't filled it yet, but I saw it, tempted-
Well, that was information that I actually got from two different sources-
Yeah.
-just so there'd be something to look at that would be representative.
Yes, I see that. Thank you for that. Now, just on the side setback, there was something on it. On one of them, on the plan, it showed nine feet on one side.
Correct.
You had eight feet, and then in the other part was going to be nine feet. It was-
No.
The proposed.
The, the other side is-
On the other side.
Eight feet.
Yeah. No.
It's 28 feet to the well, and then from the well to the garage is like another eight or nine.
That's what I said. It said nine on the plan or something.
Okay, but-
Yeah, you have 13 on one side, then the existing was eight feet, and then you have 13 feet-
Oh, for the house.
And that, these are the setbacks.
For the house.
Yeah, for the whole application. And then you have now it, that it's going to nine or something.
Well, the nine is for the garage.
That's what I'm saying.
The eight feet, four inches or so is the house.
All right, right.
So what I'm trying to represent there is that the garage is a little bit further off the border than the house presently is.
That's what we're saying, so we have to get this, because it's increasing, which is a positive thing, because you're going a nine-foot setback, bringing it more into conformity. So maybe we want to get that initialed, all right? I'll let you initial it. Because we have to get this all correct, it's a legal document.
Which, I'm sorry, you're looking at the chart, Marge?
Yes, I am, where it says minimum side setbacks, where the proposed is, the plan shows nine feet that's coming in. Gentleman agrees?
Yes.
See, 13 and eight, and then it's going to 13 and nine. All right?
Well, it actually, it's still, it would remain 13 and eight, because the- It actually, it still, it would remain 13 and eight, because the house is already in place.
No, we're not just talking the house. We're talking about the whole project, what we talk about. So this is what I don't understand. Where does the nine foot come from?
That's the garage to the border. The eight feet is the house to the border. Same border.
All right, I guess you can press the... All right, it's okay. It's only a foot, so I won't go into it. Also, the minimum front setback...
It's written, proposed condition. So just to make sure we're clear, the existing home is eight feet from the side property line?
Correct.
Okay, and the proposed garage will be nine feet?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, in a nutshell.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, 13 and eight for existing.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say, but, okay. All right.
Proposed would be the building, right?
Excuse me.
That's a good question.
There was something else on it. Just took me off. Any questions? Comments?
Yeah, just a question. So the, this garage is going to have a foundation, right?
Yes.
Okay, it's not something that can be moved? It's fixed?
Right.
Is it a foundation or a slab?
It has to be a foundation. For a steel garage, you need to have piers that go all the way below frost line.
Yeah.
To take the load of the building, which is actually limited to six legs. There's three I-beam arches in the construction of the building. The feet of each one of those arches has to be on something solid enough to take the weight without any motion or stress, otherwise it'll crack the floor. So it'd have like a footer, frost wall foundation, six piers, which are built into the walls of the foundation to give them more mass, then the slab is on top and is filled inside.
And the inside will have a finished floor, or it'll be a gravel floor?
Concrete.
Concrete.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Any more questions from any members of the board? Comments, questions?
No, I went up there and got a pretty good explanation of what's going where, and it looks doable.
Make sure that you got the memos that we got. There's a memo here dated August 8, 2018, from our conservation agent, and she says, "The garage appears to be well outside of the 200-foot Sturbridge Wetlands bylaw jurisdictional buffer zone and not on an 80% slope, which is positive. Therefore, it does not appear that a review is required. If work is required within the 200-foot buffer zone, then a filing with the conservation may be required. And you're encouraged to contact the conservation department to discuss filing requirements for any proposed work within the 200-foot buffer zone to the jurisdictional resource area."
And the 200 feet would be measured from the shore of the lake. It is over 200 feet to the face of the house.
All right. They'll be out there looking.
Then the thickness of the house, then you have the yard, so it's that additional distance away from the lake.
Right, as long as you're not in there is what they're saying. Then we have a memo from our town planner dated August 8. Have you received that? Basically, I've reviewed the application and plan to allow the construction of a freestanding garage on the existing non-conforming structure. You had it, so it's just going into the place where you had it before, is that it?
No, there was never a structure there before.
You see that?
That's correct.
Yeah, on the existing non-conforming. Okay. The proposal by the applicant is to construct a 35-foot by 30-foot garage on the property as shown on the plan submitted. The existing home is eight feet from the side property line at its closest point, and the proposed garage will be nine feet from the side property line at its closest point. All right? The location of the garage was chosen based on the proximity to the existing garage. That's what, you see what I'm getting?
I think she meant, I think she meant to say existing house or driveway.
Probably the driveway.
Well, that's why I think we need some correction there.
I know that Ms. Bubon doesn't have any problems with this.
No, yeah, I'm looking at it, but I mean, this is the memo that's in the file. That's why I questioned whether you had another garage, because I picked up on that.
I'll have her correct it and...
And put it, yeah.
And put it in the file and send a copy.
I'd like a copy too for my records, okay? Thank you. And the project has been submitted by staff review. No reports note any concern, so that's a good thing, okay? And now, let's go with that. And I just had one or two questions. According to the plan, it said that it was a ground field survey on April 21st, 2018. Do you know if that was a tape or instrument survey?
That was instrument.
It was instrument, thank you.
I worked, in fact, with them.
Okay.
It ties into GPS satellites. I think it ties into seven at a time, as opposed to three for standard GPS.
You're a surveyor?
Pardon?
You're a surveyor?
I went through a portion of the training.
Okay. No, I mean, because the way you said it...
Forty-five years ago.
Oh, all right.
I'm not unfamiliar with surveying, but when I was going through it, it was the old manual transit. It was not the new electronic stuff.
My husband was a surveyor, and I just forget. All right, so it was an instrument survey, so, because, as you know, there are differences. All right. You want something? Everything else seems fine. Okay, would anyone like to make, oh, police chief has no problem. Nobody seems to have any problems. We got a memo from him. Fire department has no problems. There again, make sure that you have a very visible address on the street address side of the house.
The house is about 500 feet off the street.
No, that's what I'm laughing at, because you're going to have to have it visible on the road. Just make sure that, often in case of any extreme fire or anything like that, they know where to look for you.
So is there, is there some kind of a sign I'm supposed to put up at the road?
You have to identify wherever. It's easy to locate your property, so...
Lane 10 itself is marked.
No, I know, Lane 10.
And then I do have a 128 sign that points my leg.
I know you do. I saw it. That should be, but it closes to you where you can, you know?
Yeah.
That's for your own safety, that's all. So you have all of this now. Any more questions?
Just one question.
Sure.
Well, just, it's more for clarification. So, because I thought you said there isn't any existing garage?
Correct. There is no existing garage.
Okay, because it says, based on its proximity to the existing garage.
That's...
I think that should have said existing driveway, because my driveway terminates right in front of the location of this garage.
And now you understand why I was going in the direction I was going.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I do too. So I'll have Jean correct the memo, sign it. I'll put a copy in the file and give one to Mr. Pelisser.
The plan is incorrect to the... All right.
Any more questions?
More comments? All right, hearing done. All right, let me see. Would you like me to make a determination?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you make a motion.
Regarding the request for a determination from Daniel Pelisser and Robin Pelisser for construction of a freestanding garage on their property located at 128 Lane 10, 351 New Boston Road, and a plan dated May 30th, 2018, prepared by WSP USA Incorporated. I do not see that there's anything about this project that would increase any non-conformities on the property or detract from the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form, and would recommend that Mr. Pelisser be able to proceed with the job upon completion of all permits with all other town boards and town authorities.
Very good. All right, may I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Five zero in favor.
Thank you.
Just make sure you got all your permits lined up and all your ducks in a row.
I'll have you sign this next copy, and then you can have to give the original to you for your record.
Was there something I was supposed to initial to? Thought I heard that.
No, that was okay. Yeah, because there was a misstatement in the, it's okay.
And I'll email you Jean's updated memo.
Yeah, and I'd like one for...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If I put my John Hancock on anything, I want it to be...
Sure.
For notification to the butters, is there a form that I get that indicates all of the pertinent information that I include?
And, no. They, a lot of times, we get in a buzz, but for a public hearing, if you have to go for anything for a public hearing, then the butters within 300 feet of the area have to be notified, and it's done by certified mail, and you have to pay for posting. They still have to pay for the posting of the public hearing and everything. That hasn't changed over the years, has it?
That's right.
And then you have to send out the notices to the butters then. But this is not a public hearing. This is just a request for determination.
So if they...
So you're okay.
That it did increase the nonconformity, then you would ask the butters to...
No, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of luck.
Have a nice one.
You too, sir. Oh, wow. Going good, going good. All right. Old business, anything under old business, new business?
Yeah, I want to bring up one thing.
Under old or new?
This is kind of old and new.
Okay.
It's related to the gentleman just left. He's putting up the structure that is going to be within the setback, the legal setback of 15 feet, right, side setback. And it's not the same side setback that he's already violating under the old laws. I mean, he had an eight-foot setback prior. Now he's got nine feet on this, but this is kind of like a brand-new setback. Now, in this case, they both, where the setback is small, they both come up against the same piece of property. So we violated that property way back.
Right.
And so this one really isn't a new nonconformity.
No, it's not actually.
And if this was a separate piece of property where he's building his garage adjacent to a second piece of property, then what, would he be increasing the nonconformity? Because now he's approaching, not the same one that we've already approved, but a different piece of property.
You mean, and he owns it?
No, someone else owns it.
Oh, well, that's a different situation, and that would be, it's up to the neighbor then. If he's encroaching on the neighbor, that's their battle. We can't get into that.
But if he's, no, maybe I'm not getting across. Do you understand what I'm saying?
He's nonconforming on a second piece of property.
He's nonconforming, but he doesn't own the property.
Right, but still, he's within the setbacks, so...
But, but he's still on somebody else's property.
But it's detrimental to two people now instead of one.
So it's up to him or the other party to bring him into court.
But we, how can we approve that?
Well...
Wouldn't we approve that?
We, we wouldn't be able to, and hopefully, the other departments responsible for that would pick up on it as well.
Right, and the butter would be notified, and they could contest it, correct?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't get here to begin with.
It wouldn't, no, it shouldn't come here to begin with.
Yeah.
Exactly. We wouldn't see it. That would be something he would have to go in and speak, you know, go into planning to start first, and they should pick right up on that and say, "Wait a second. You can't get any permits for that. You're in violation," or, right? You couldn't, you can't encroach on another person's property.
No more than you already are.
Well, you couldn't encroach on anybody else's property if you don't own that property.
But it's not really a question of whether or not this guy owns it.
So I think, may I try?
Yeah.
So I understand what you're saying with his house abutting one neighbor's property, his proposed garage abutting on another's, correct? But his lot is one continuous lot, and the laws apply to the lot as a, his lot as a whole.
That's what I'm saying, that's independent.
And not the individual butters. So his house, so for lot size and coverage, he's fine. He has a lot of land, so that's not, that's conforming. So the nonconformity in this situation is the, his house is within the setback, and because that's eight feet, and his garage is proposed at nine feet, it's less nonconforming than what's already there, and whoever lives on the other side of the line, if they felt like the decision was not okay, they could bring him us to court and appeal that.
Well, that's...
As I understand.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That would be the thing, and we would not get into that. That's not our, that's what I'm saying. That would not be our...
Did that answer your question, Tom?
Yeah, pretty close, yes.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. It would not be our thing. But we don't know whether this was nonconforming before there were any zoning bylaws. We didn't have zoning bylaws until 1965. So if that was preexisting before that, okay, you see what I'm getting at? That would have nothing to do with it. And, now, I guess that's where we're at.
Do we have anything else on the agenda for this evening?
No, that was just a question. So now, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? And the time noted is approximately 7:20.
So moved.
All right. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Good night.